Thank you, President.
Thank you, President Johnson, members of the Board of Education, and members of the Wapenture Central School District living community. What a phenomenal couple of weeks we just completed. We had moving up ceremonies at our elementary schools, moving up ceremonies at our junior high schools. We had the opportunity to recognize our stellar students for all of their outstanding accomplishments academically, athletically, in music and the fine and performing arts. We capped it off with three phenomenal graduation ceremonies last Thursday and Friday as we graduated 915 students from our school district who will be moving on and continuing on their path to excellence. So I want to thank our faculty and staff for all of their efforts in working with our families for the past 13 years of our graduates. I want to thank our families for motivating and inspiring our students to succeed and instill upon them the importance of a quality education and for supporting our school district. And the future is bright. And as a former high school principal, I'm glad to say that our students are prepared for whatever endeavors they face. I'd also like to welcome our two student board members. Welcome. I'm sure it'll be a very interesting experience. We're glad to have you. I also want to welcome our new Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Dr. Dan Wilson. I also want to recognize and welcome Corinne Montesano, our new board member. And I look forward to a phenomenal '25-'26 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Don. Now, we're going to welcome our new student representatives, board members. And first up is Winter Ross from John Jay. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to say it's an absolute honor to be here representing the student body and being instrumental in positive change in John Jay High School. As for me, last year I had the honor of being president of both chess and debate clubs separately. And this year, I've taken up the helm of president of the Student Honor Society, as well as vice president of Education of Molling Nations. Last year, I also had the pleasure of working with Senator Rob Robinson as I interned for his office. And I published various scientific literary reviews in conjunction with scientists from Columbia University. I've come since I'm a lawyer. And this summer, I will be studying at Brown University and taking up courses.
Thank you very much, Winter. And next, we have Emma. I'm going to ask you to pronounce that for me because I need to learn it.
It's Klaupatowski. I'm Emma Klaupatowski. I'm very excited to be on here and to share with you guys expectations and what the speaking body of RCK wants to bring. I am the treasurer of the Royal Papa Honor Society. I am an interept, being a Trojan Arrows and an FBLA. I'm also in the Business Honor Society and the Spanish National Honor Society.
Our third member.
Excuse me. I just have to apologize that this is your first board meeting with Wapenture Central School District Board, and it happens to be the longest meeting of the whole year. Believe me, the expectations for next meeting will be a lot shorter.
Oh, much, much shorter. So we have a third member from Orchard View Alternative High School, Asher Sparrell. He was unable to be here, but he did leave a statement for us. My name is Ash Sparrell, and I am a rising senior at Orchard View. I'm originally from Brooklyn. I enjoy art forms like painting, drawing, and making jewelry. I also care for and play with my two dogs. And I am in the process of raising two green frogs, a project that stemmed from my science teacher after they were found in a creek at Tappo's Deep. After graduation, I'd like to study early childhood education or marine science. I'm looking forward to learning about how the school board works this year. And I'd like to really extend a great gratitude to our three students as this is a lot to take on, and we appreciate it. I know we were really late, so if our student members need to leave, I, we totally 100% understand it. Thank you so much, and we will see you in another meeting if you do. So next one is 12.03 Consent Agenda Resolution. Does anybody want to remove something from the consent agenda? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to remove item 12.03, number 41A1. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: 12.02, 12.03, with the exception of item 41 dot A1; 12.04, 12.05, 12.06, 12.07, 12.08, 12.09, 12.10, 12.11, and 12.12.
Motion, Peggy Kellum, second. Mr. Lumia, all those in favor? Unanimous. 12.03, 41A1. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve item number 12.03, number 41 point A1. Motion. Mr. Coplarri, second. Mr. McFarland, all those in favor? Mr. Lumia, Ms. Kellum, Ms. Miggitts, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Mr. Morgan and Mr. Coplarri. All those against abstaining, Ms. Montesano. 13.01 Approval of Bond Resolutions, Purchase of Student Transportation Vehicles Initiation. A resolution authorizing the issuance of $2,660,038 of bonds of Wapenture Central School District, Dutchess and Putnam Counties, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of student transportation vehicles in said school district. Whereas all conditions precedent to the financing of the capital project hereinafter described, including compliance with the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, as a Type II action, have been performed. And whereas at the annual meeting of the Qualified Voters of Wapenture Central School District, Dutchess and Putnam Counties, New York, the school district, held on May 20, 2025, a proposition that was duly adopted authorizing the Board of Education of said school district to undertake the purchase of student transportation vehicles, including incidental expenses in connection therewith at a maximum estimated cost of $2,660,038. Such proposition providing for the levy of a tax, therefore, to be collected in installments with up to $2,660,038 obligations of said school district to be issued in anticipation thereof. And whereas it is now desired to provide for the authorization of such class of objects or purposes and for the financing thereof, now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Education of Wapenture Central School District, Dutchess and Putnam Counties, New York, as follows: Section 1, the purchase of student transportation vehicles, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, at a maximum estimated cost of $2,660,038 in for the Wapenture Central School District, Dutchess and Putnam Counties, New York, is hereby authorized. Section 2, the plan for the financing of the aforesaid $2,660,038 maximum estimated cost shall be by the issuance of $2,660,038 bonds of said school district hereby authorized to be issued, therefore, pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law. Section 3, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforesaid class of objects or purposes is five years pursuant to subdivision 29 of paragraph A of section 11.00 of the local finance law. Section 4, the faith and credit of said Wapenture Central School District, Dutchess and Putnam Counties, New York, are hereby irrevocably pledged for the payment of the principal of and the interest on such bonds as the same respectively become due and payable. An annual appropriation shall be made in each year sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on such bonds becoming due and payable in such year. There shall annually be levied on all the taxable real property in said school district a tax sufficient to pay the principal and the interest on such bonds as the same become due and payable. Section 5, subject to the provisions of the local finance law, the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance and sale of the bonds hereinauthorized, including renewals of such notes, is hereby delegated to the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer. Such notes shall be of such terms, form, and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be prescribed by said President of the Board of Education, consistent with the provisions of local finance law. Section 6, all other matters except as provided herein relating to the bonds hereinauthorized, including the date, denominations, maturities, and interest payment dates within the limitations prescribed herein and the manner of execution of the same, including the consolidation with other issues, and also the ability to use bonds with substantially level or declining annual debt service shall be determined by the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer of such school district. Such bonds shall contain substantially the recital of validity clause provided for in section 52.00 of the local finance law and shall otherwise be in such form and contain such recitals in addition to those required by section 51.00 of the local finance law, as the President of the Board of Education shall determine, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section 7, the validity of such bonds and bond anticipation notes may be contested only if: 1. Such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which said school district is not authorized to expend money; or 2. The provisions of law which should be complied with as of the date of publication of this resolution are not substantially complied with, and an action suit or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within 20 days after the date of such publication; or 3. Such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Section 8, this resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent for purposes of Treasury Regulations Sections, Section 1.1502. Other than as specified in this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis, or otherwise set aside with respect to the permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. Section 9, this resolution, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in summary form in the official newspapers of said school district for such purpose, together with a notice of the school district clerk substantially in the form provided in section 81.00 of the local finance law. Do I have a motion? Ms. Kellum, second. Mr. McFarland. Mr. Lumia.
Can she repeat that again, please?
All those in favor? Unanimous. 13.02 Approval of Proposal for Topographic Survey. Whereas the Wapenture Central School District has identified the need for professional land surveying services at Brinkerhoff Elementary School, Van Wyck Junior High School, Royce Ketchum High School, and John Jay High School, collectively the sites in connection with the 2025 capital project approved by the district voters on May 20, 2025. And whereas Colliers Engineering and Design, CTPC, DBA, doing business as Mazer Consulting Engineering and Land Surveying, has submitted a proposal to perform existing condition topographic surveys at the sites for a total cost of $99,800. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal submitted by Colliers Engineering and Design, CTPC, in the amount of $99,800 for the performance of topographic survey services at the sites. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the board president to execute the proposal and any related documents necessary to effectuate this agreement, subject to the review and approval of the school district's legal counsel. Motion. Ms. Kellum, second. Mr. McFarland, discussion. Yes, Mr. Lumia.
I just have one basic question. How many properties have been added to this district for the last 17 years which require an expenditure of $99,800? How many properties have been added that require a topographical survey of this district?
Okay, this is, I can speak as a month capital. So this is regarding the capital project. And in order for us to do certain parts of the project, you have to get a new up-to-date topographical survey. This is money that was built into the capital project because you have to have current surveys. They always, I get it, but other properties were bought around it. And you have to be able to do these surveys in order to get the proper surveys done.
$99,000?
That's a lot. It has to be complied.
Sorry? It's complied with the law.
Right.
We have to comply, it's fine, but I tell you right now, it's crazy.
It was built into the capital project when we did the funds. All those in favor? Mr. McFarland? Unanimous. 13.03 Mid Hudson School Survey Law Conference. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve Board Member John S. Morgan to attend the Mid Hudson School Study Council Annual School Law Conference on Friday, August 1, 2025, from 7:35 a.m. to 3 p.m. at the Aquinas Hall Theater, Mount St. Mary College, at a cost of $135 per person registration fee, group registration of three or more, and any reimbursement for travel per board policy. Dr. Bonk, Marissa Harris, please. Do I have a motion? Ms. Kellum, second. Mr. McFarland, any discussion? Or anyone else that wanted to try and go? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. 14, or 13.04 NISBA Summer Law Conference. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve the Board Member Cheryl Miggitts and other interested board members and administrators to attend the NISBA Summer Law Conference scheduled for August 5 through 6, 2025, live virtual at the district office at a cost of $210 member rate registration fee. Motion, Ms. Kellum, second. Mr. Lumia, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. 13.05 NISBA Annual Conference. Currently, we have Ms. Kellum, Ms. Miggitts, and myself attending. I believe Dr. Bonk will be there as well. For any of you that are interested, we do have a presentation that's going to be given by some of our very own depth in New York City this year. So is anybody else interested, or no? Okay. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve Board Members Peggy Kellum, Cheryl Miggitts, Marie Johnson to attend the NISBA Annual Convention and Education Expo on October 23rd to 25th, 2025, in New York City, at a cost of $540 member, $1,080 non-member registration fee, pre-convention seminars, school law, number rate of 325, or Board Officers Academy, number rate of 285, and any reimbursement for hotel mileage, travel, tolls, parking, and meals, per board policy. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Ms. Kellum, Peggy Kellum, to serve as its voting delegate at the annual NISBA Annual Convention and gives full discretion to Peggy Kellum on voting the intention of the board after hearing discussion and amendments on the convention floor. The final outcome on the resolutions will be posted on board docs. Motions? Ms. Kellum, second. Mr. Lumia, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 13.06 Board Goals Subcommittee Report Discussion: Approval of Board Goals. Mr. Coplarri, would you like to take charge on this one, since you are chairperson?
Sure. The committee, the Board Goals Committee, or Subcommittee, met with trustees Morgan, trustees Odoms, and last year's president, McFarland, who attended the meeting ex officio. And we went over a basic review of previous year's goals and tried to systematically capture them. Based on some of the input we got back from other trustees, we came up with the following four. President Johnson, would you like me to read them?
Yes.
So these are not in any given order, except what's on paper. So one is not necessarily more important than the other. The first goal is the Wapenture Central School District attracts and retains high-quality staff and encourages professional and leadership development. Would you like me to explain on behalf of the subcommittee the reasoning behind those, or no?
No, why don't we?
Okay.
We have questions. I'll have you read them, and then we can.
Sure. Second goal, the board supports the expansion of project-based learning initiatives across the curriculum and the continued development of PTEC and skilled trades programs to optimize community workforce opportunities. Three, promote fiscal responsibility and maintain budgetary balance. Align district initiatives with student, staff, and community needs. And number four, the board encourages strategies to maximize attendance for student success and supports district initiatives which improve attendance rates for students and staff. Those are the four that the Subcommittee came up with.
Let's see the resolutions. Resolved, the Board of Education of the Wapenture Central School District hereby adopts the Board of Education goals for the '25-'26. Oh, wait. Motion, Peggy, second. John, discussion, Mr. Lumia.
Yeah, good question. I've been on the board for 17 years. And in all those years, there's never been a discussion as whether board goals have been met. And I think, actually, whatever, we should start determining whether these goals, and my fault, Vice President, we never discussed whether our goals were met or not. I think it's very important next year, President Johnson, I think that we should discuss whether these particular focal, which are very good, I'd like to thank the four individuals that determine those goals, excellent goals. I would like to see whether, in fact, we have, we met those goals.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for the comment that you support the goals, trustee Lumia. As part of our board review process, while we don't discuss it here at the table and other documentation that we share, we actually do this every single year in terms of evaluating whether they were met, partially met, or not met at all.
I think it should be done in public, not... We do that. But I think it should be done in a public session.
Mr. Odoms?
Yes, we did discuss that, that we should look at it more maybe every quarter. But remember, the board goals is based, is a general goal that the superintendent would incorporate in his general goal for himself and his administration. So we don't look at it as often, but we do look at it at the end of the year when you talk about different types of presentations. It's just not really focused on, you know, that goal represents that presentation. For example, we had a few weeks ago a presentation on attendance, and that was based on one of the board goals that we have this year and last year. But I do understand we should really reflect this is based on a board goal.
Ms. Kellum.
I think the goals are excellent, but I'd like to make a grammatical change to the third goal, to make it consistent with the other goals, to add the board at the beginning, the board promotes, we're going to add on that, fiscal responsibility and maintains, and that's on maintain, budgetary balance, and aligns, again, an S on align, district initiatives with students, staff, and community needs.
Do I have a motion? Or a motion?
I would like to amend Mrs. Kellum's amendment, not to be pedantic, but as you see it already. I would suggest changing it to, as you said, the board promotes fiscal responsibility, comma, maintains budgetary balance, comma, and aligns district initiatives with students, staff, and community needs to maintain.
I accept your change to my amendment.
Did you get that, Ms. Pedro?
I'm glad we have English experts on the board.
When you have an English college professor looking at it, yes. Do I have a motion and a second to accept those amendments? Mr. Lumia, motions to accept. Ms. Kellum, second. All those in favor of accepting the changes to the amendment? Unanimous. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure before we go to the main motion. Okay, that being said, can we now approve?
No motion.
Yeah. Now I need to get a motion to approve the goals as amended. Mr. Lumia, second by Ms. Kellum. All those in favor? Unanimous. 14, Board Members May Request Additions to the Agenda. Do we have anybody adding anything to the agenda? Not seeing any. 15.01 Comments from the Public. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to listen to public comment. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designated to be a debate or dialogue. Please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues, if need be. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public comment form, which may be attained online or at the desk with the district clerk. We will have the proper staff member get back to you as appropriate. We will have the proper staff member get back to you as appropriate. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to address any comments or questions about specific students or school personnel. We would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Compliments or complaints about student discipline issues involving specific students or personnel, named or implied, must not be addressed during public comment. A total of 30 minutes of the time of each board meeting is set aside to allow for public comments on items relating to our school district that are not on tonight's agenda. A sign-on sheet for non-agenda items is located at the desk of the district clerk. Individual comments are limited to three minutes and are welcome. In the interest of stability and respect for different points of view, clapping, booing, and any disturbance or disruption during either public comment period is not permitted. At this time, comments related to school district business are welcome. We have Lainy.
Lain.
Lain Agüero.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent fellow members of the community. My name is Lain Agüero, and I'm here tonight as parent and advocate for my son Riley Agüero.
Ma'am, we're not allowed to discuss.
Can't say his name.
We can't discuss any, any personal.
Oh, I don't want to discuss, I'm making it.
Speak closely, I'm sorry. So, I, I'm speaking on behalf of my son, as an advocate for my son. We don't allow any comments on students, on any individual students. At the mic.
I find that hard to believe. I can edit names out. I can, "Child A," too busy, like.
That's implied, ma'am, and that, that's what I stated. We can't have any names or implied. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, I'll stand like this. The bullying in the school districts are out of control. I'm going a little off script here because I have to avoid names. My son's been in the cheaper for seven years. He's in sixth grade, and he's moving on, right? But for seven years in that school, nobody protected him. Nobody helped him.
And. Ma'am, you're discussing a specific incident? I would encourage you to go through.
I did.
Did you go to?
I didn't get a response. I filed DAS forms, I have all the emails, I have everything, and this was my last resort.
Okay. We will have a proper personnel come down and speak to you. Because I really can't have you disclosing that kind of private information.
Well, I can tell you that it's also. My son's private information was given up.
Ma'am, I just, I'm asking respectfully.
So, I don't get, I don't get.
We will have somebody come down and speak to you at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Not seeing anyone. 16.01 Motion to Adjourn. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenture Central School District does hereby adjourn the July 1, 2025 Board of Education's organizational and regular business meeting. The time is 10:06. Motion? Mr. Odoms, second. Mr. Lumia, all in favor? Adjourned.